...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, God. Fine, I won't wear those anymore.
I didn't say a thing.
Well, Tony already told me.
Who did?
Tony.
Great minds think alike.
All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting in order with the pleasure of the lesions row call. So in attendance, we have all five board supervisors. We have Bob, Doug, myself, Ed, and Carol. And I would like to make, does anybody like to make a motion for approval of the final agenda?
Still moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. I have none. Okay, next. Local committees here, we've got no public comment. Do we have anything?
Party has a full pass now, though.
All right.
He told me.
I gave it to him last week.
Yes.
We've had it since October 1st. Committees and items to, and reports.
Did you skip achievements?
Oh, she said none.
Oh, none, okay.
Okay. Move to accept the reports of 7A and 7B.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept advisory committees items and reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes.
So moved on agenda items 8A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda items. Anything to go? Anything you guys want to talk about?
I move on consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
There's no D.
There is no D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The D's were district.
District engineer.
Just three.
Just testing us.
All right, so we have a motion.
I haven't seen you were awake.
I second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. District engineer.
Nice guy.
I know, like, everything is just going right back.
He's not even on.
He is not.
Uh-uh. That's our, go to it. I can give updates.
Yeah, I was getting ready to. I throw it away.
I'll give an update. I know Stephen was celebrating his anniversary with his wife, so I'll just run through the projects real quick.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Today's John's and my wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
They offer that, he must be young.
That's touch of them.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Um, the enter-
Consecutive, you know, one right after the other.
Oh, wow.
Does that count?
Yeah.
I'm disqualified.
Uh, the irrigation pump station generator, we are nearing, we've issued substantial completion, we're nearing final completion, just a couple crosses, Ts dotting Is, and startup was good. The irrigation enforcement improvements, we're waiting on HMGP funding on that. The lower Hawthorne well, we are closing out that project, and you won't see it probably on the next update, so that project is complete. The Gateway Utility Storage Building, there's minor punch list items that the contractor had some lead times, so we're waiting on that, but in essence, it's complete. It's like a light switch type thing. The 24 lakes, Laura is jumping up and down with Troy.
No, no.
Not yet?
No, 22.
Oh, 22 lakes, my bad. These were done, we're just closing out the LDO permits, so.
Yeah, the fiscal 22, I submitted my final request for reimbursement, and you guys will have the fiscal sustainability plan with the resolution for it at your meeting in December, so I can finally get those off my plates on four years.
FY25 lake bank, Met Tower is scheduled to do the two ponds in Daniels, and they'll probably be starting in January or February. The lake bank restoration HMGP, that's the 21 ponds that we received that million dollar grant. Tetra Tech is in design, hopefully they'll be getting us 30% here soon.
And speaking of ponds, how many are we doing during this dry season now?
Just two.
Just two?
Yes.
Forty-three in Pelican.
Well, three then, three if we count those.
And then two in Gateway.
Yes.
So how many more are left?
Twenty-one, and then Pelican has their priority list that we're, we're going to slowly go after.
Then we start all over.
Yep, then we start all over, and reevaluate and do the red, orange, yellow, green.
So why are we only doing two this year if we have 21 more to go?
Because we're waiting on the grant, we're doing the grant funding.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a 75% grant that we're getting.
Money.
Money.
Okay.
So then that leads into pond 43, we had the preconstruct, the prebid meeting yesterday or the day before onsite, had a handful of bidders, so that's out to bid right now. Everybody's under the cone of silence.
It's Pelican.
Yes. The Pelican Preserve Boulevard Mill and Overlay, Tetra Tech is going to start design on that, and we'll probably bid that out sometime after the first of the year. We're not rushing into that because of the FPL project. The Sherman Soccer Complex parking lot expansion, they're wrapping up design and have submitted permitting to the county. The Public Works building, we-
Paul, just for a second, just in a larger scheme of things, still planning to meet with the leagues?
Yes.
To talk about just overall development and opportunities and some of the-
Yep.
Okay.
Planning on the, probably sometime early December. The Public Works building relocation, the county, Board of County Commission approved the interlocal agreement, so we are good to submit for those permits, which we have done. The Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building-
One second, do we have a plan? What does the plan look like for this? I think we have-
Public Works building?
Yeah.
It's out back here. It's basically going to be that building out there, over there.
So we're going to mimic that structure?
Yeah, exactly, yep. Plus insulation, because we didn't do insulation last time, so. Walls are going up, concrete walls are going up at the admin building. You're going to see quite a bit of movement there. Court sports starting to have, start to be laid over the next couple weeks. They are still on schedule.
When can we start to see-
July?
June.
When can we start to see some design layout and options for the boardroom?
Uh, the furniture is coming to you guys at the December 4th meeting for your approval, but the design, like, the layout is already been as part of the, like, the layout was already done as part of the design.
That was what established the sizes.
Yes.
So can we, can we just take a look at that, see-
Stephen, we're going through your report right now.
What the, what that-
Sorry, guys.
-program structure looks like as far as everything from sizes to, to, I don't know if I remember seeing a detail-
We can, I can sit one-on-one with you if you want to look at that. I don't, I mean, we can go through that. The chairs and the furniture and stuff, that's all coming, and then-
The only reason I bring that up is because, I mean, we want to have a great building, but we're going to spend our time in that room.
Yep.
So I would just like to have a little bit of line of sight to make sure that from our point of view, it's functional, that it meets our requirements and our needs, along with staff and residents as well.
I'd kind of like to see that, too, if you-
Okay, well, I mean, we can bring it in front of you guys, that's fine. The, the beauty of it is, we, it was designed in a sense that it's flexible, so if we want to change, you know, the wires, the cords and stuff, they're already there, they're already, you know, hidden, at least they're designed to be hidden, but if we want to change or alter things, we'll have the flexibility to do that.
We're trying to do wireless wherever possible.
Yep. These, these mics are going to be in the new, in the new building.
Yes, these are from, these, we got, really, because of the issues with the old ones.
I'm, I'm more concerned with, you know, spacing.
Yep.
How we are able to communicate on the board, be able to see information, being able to have our own, you know, devices, how do we share back and forth? How do we look at what's being presented? So just more of a functional perspective?
It's essentially comparable to this, the cords and everything will be buried.
We haven't decided what's going to happen with this yet, but you guys will have monitors.
Yeah, the intent is to have it recessed so we can see over them.
To me, there's kind of three.
We need short little squatty people like me, can't hide behind their computer.
Elevated chairs. Need to be from gunfire.
But yes, we can bring that through, and so you guys can take a look at that.
Yeah, and just the other pieces, any, so the three areas of focus is definitely the board, staff needs, and then resident community needs, and resident community, I split that in half with a good in-person experience as well as an online experience as well, so.
Okay, yep, we can bring that.
Thank you.
Stephen, I'll roll through unless you want to take over from here. We are on CCTV sewer.
Okay, yeah, I can jump in. Sorry, guys, I was late. I did not expect you all to get through the agenda that quickly. My apologies. For the record, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. On CCTV sewer, we are finalizing the report. There is one manhole out in the field that has yet to be located. We know approximately where it is, but it's, appears to be buried, so Gateway staff is working with vendors to try and locate that more efficiently, and then have National Waterman Cleaning come out, back out and do an inspection.
Where's that at, Steve?
Are you?
Is it in my community?
I think so.
Where is it?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's by Hidden Links, and I think it's in a flower bed, outside. So we'll dig to China, and you can watch.
Yeah, so once we locate it, we'll have to, you know, engage a vendor to put a riser on that and bring it to grid.
It's not the one on the wall, is it? Is it Storm or Sanitary?
Sewer, sanitary. Sanitary.
If I could just go back real quick to the admin building, do you have a dedicated room for like a hot box and all of our records and?
We're not going to have records.
Electronically, right?
We're going to do, where everything's electronically.
Okay.
I mean, we're keeping this room up here for any paper copies that we're required to keep, but to the new building, no paper. Apps are staying here, too. They're, we're not, they're going up there.
No, they're staying.
All right, go ahead, Stephen.
CCTV Storm, the contractor is planning to resume in the first week of December. They took a hiatus, they were having a hard time combating high water levels, so with everything drying up, they're hoping to have a little easier of time from here on out, so hopefully next meeting, we'll be able to give you some good news on that. GIS Support Services, we have been working with staff to, to update the GIS and import all of the assets the district owns, so there's been a lot of back and forth and workshopping on that. Development Updates, Daniels Parkway Apartments, we returned comments back to them for the, I think it's actually the seven, kind of like 6.5 review, they've kind of changed gears, and they're planning on doing a phased approach for their construction, and it's just brought up some more concerns, so they've got a couple questions for us to answer before we can, can move on. Santa Luis Construction, the repairs to the lake bank, that's an ongoing issue, that Tony has been driving that one, so I'll let him give an update on his go-around. Garrett FM, construction is going forward, and they're wrapping up utilities, they're planning, I think, to turn over utilities in early January to the district. Anyways, that's what they're trying to do. They're working on the lift station right now.
Thanks for Stephen.
I have none.
Thanks, Stephen.
Hi, guys.
Have a good-
Congratulations.
Anniversary.
Thanks.
Happy anniversary, Stephen.
So back to, you have 11?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, 12?
Laura's first, admin.
Anything for me?
Do you want to point out the thing that you requested last time? Any questions for Laura regarding the admin report?
Can you kind of go through this?
Sure, it's just, it's the revenue that we got from the soccer field by month, based on the date of the receipt of the revenue, not the date of the reservation, because I don't have any way to track how much we got by day. That's just the, whenever we were paid, that's when it was reported.
So you can see-
The fact that it's so low in July, August, and September.
Because the fields are closed.
Because the fields are closed.
Two times.
In September?
Yeah, we wouldn't have gotten any money until later in September. They send, they're behind, so like September's money, we get in October, August begin in September, so that's why they're a little behind.
Primarily today, there's, there's really two revenue generating time periods, and that corresponds with the two seas, most leagues have two seasons, so they kind of fall within those two season parameters, but I think what's important to call out here is, we have lost revenue during the summer because we had to do maintenance.
Area that curves the total of the year, what's that number?
What?
What's the total of all of that? What does that equal? Looks like 12 plus, 15 plus, 25 plus, what is, what is all those added up equal?
Soccer last year, total income was 156,000.
156?
Yeah, a little over.
Okay.
It's a long way from like the, what, it used to be 60K?
It started in 21, yeah.
It was like five years ago, I think it was.
It was 42,000 in fiscal '21, 61 in '22, 75 in '23, 158 in '24, and 156 last year.
Almost quadrupled revenue, but the problem is, expenses have also followed that trend, right?
Please, it's a good news.
But that's the good news, I mean, we've increased revenue, that's very, very positive.
It's with the start of Facilitron is when the revenue really started to go up.
It started charging more, too.
That, too, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything for admin?
This was the first month, I think, that the sheriff reports were back in there yet. We weren't getting a lot of them, but they're in there, so.
All right, moving on.
One quick question, so the contract for the background check, the swimming lessons at the pool, they're going to be free of charge, a service that we will provide, or it's going to be like-
She's charging for them, and then we get a percentage of the revenue, yeah.
She did reimburse for the background check.
Yeah. Vicky let me know today.
All right, Public Works.
I'm sorry on the sheriff's report. Are we having difficulty over here getting officers?
No.
No, she, we have the same one every time.
Detective O'Camp.
Yeah, she's very, this is her report, she's very thorough.
Well, it's very frustrating in Pelican, because we couldn't get City of Fort Myers, but they wouldn't give it up for Lee County, and just interestingly enough, they're now employing fish and wildlife people.
Yeah, that's, that's going in front of safety and security for their consideration, so.
And then we expect that to happen. I was just wondering, because they can still issue, you know, tickets and things.
Yep.
Have you seen a statewide sort of?
Yeah, and over waterways.
Yep, they're like troopers plus that.
You can't bring in Lee County?
Can't get them, they'll, we have contracts, but nobody will come. The officers don't want the money.
But we don't have any problem here in Gateway.
Who's your contact? Who's your contact?
City of Fort Myers is-
No, well, that's what I'm asking, is it, is it issue with City of Fort Myers, the Lee County sheriff?
City of Fort Myers. We have made inroads with, with Lee County, but then it's the, you know, don't step in my toes.
Why can't we, we're one Gateway, why can't we share that service? So if, if we have someone in Gateway, they should absolutely be going in Pelican.
Because they have no authority to like issue a ticket, or even if they allow it, Lee County cannot issue a ticket on the City of Fort Myers.
Yeah, but there's, isn't there some Lee County?
They have county-wide jurisdiction. Somebody didn't think about these kind of details.
But what I'm saying is, like, I know that there's City of Fort Myers roads, but it-
But they do, so they're against them.
And there also Lee County roads in there? Or no, they all Fort Myers?
I think it's all City of Fort Myers.
Okay, all City of Fort Myers, okay.
Other than tree line, but those.
I can, I can chime in a little, because I know that they brought this up at the last safety and security meeting, that Rich Glover's had more success with the City of Fort Myers, they have been getting more regular patrols in there, I've been seeing the bills, so I know that they, it would be like once every couple of months, I would get a bill, and now I get one every two or three weeks.
It's been a four-year problem.
So, but they, they are coming in there more frequently.
Who's responsible for booking that? Is Pelican booking the?
They have a liaison.
And are you paying for that, or is that coming out of Gateway?
Oh, yeah, no. It's in the safety and security.
It's like we have a line item, so do they.
It's a budget item.
Yeah, just like ours.
Their fund, their Pelican fund.
We've wanted more, like you guys with the runaway traffic, we've wanted more surveillance than we've been able to get.
Hold on just a second, what I'm saying is, so, Lee County officers are paid out of, for, Lee County in Gateway are paid out of Gateway-
General fund.
General fund.
Correct.
Why is that different than Pelican?
Because it's the City of Fort Myers, and they're only patrolling inside of Pelican.
Oh, okay, and, and so Pelican doesn't, doesn't pay for any of the Lee County officers that are operating Gateway?
They pay a percent, because they're paying a portion of the general, it's always been like that.
I have a contact with City of Fort Myers.
Oh, I do, too. The officers are great when you talk to them, but when the rubber hits the road, you can't get them.
It is scheduling, so.
Well, we fixed the problem.
Okay.
Because now we got fish and wildlife.
Okay, that's fine, all right.
Okay, all right.
Just have your point.
We're going to have more, we're going to have more officers. We need to make sure you're getting the support that's needed from us if we needed to, from a district perspective.
We, we were the ones who found fish and wildlife. Randy was the one who found fish and wildlife, and that's what we took into safety and security for their consideration.
We expect the same level of quality, same level of authority.
Probably better.
Probably better.
Yeah, I heard that they're more, they're enforced more. If that's all we're looking for, they're, they're, they are heavy on the enforcement.
They get paid less salary-wise, by their agency.
Doug, there was also always a dispute with the Fort Myers Police Chief. His philosophy was that warning tickets should be given, and the residents should be educated as to the proper traffic things, rather than writing a ticket. And also with this change, they're hoping that once they write tickets and the word starts going around, all of a sudden, everybody will slow down because so-and-so got a ticket for N number of dollars and, you know.
I just, I, very rarely do I run into an environment where the vendor dictates the parameters that the client is paying for, so, yeah.
But the difference is with law enforcement, they have discretion, and they won't have the discretion constrained. That's why.
I get it, but-
We're hopeful we'll be good with-
And the downside, I'll just close on this, the downside was, if the officer wrote a ticket, he's got to go to court. If he writes a warning, it's done. So you couldn't get them to have to put in more hours to go to court.
Anything else, moving on to Public Works? Anything for Paul? I just want to call to your attention the Fun Park, so you guys have heard this year after year, and we have patched and done the best we can, but the basketball court at the Fun Park needs either a large investment or it needs to be removed. So my recommendation, considering that we have the, the basketball court forthcoming at the Commons, is to remove the court, the concrete and hoops, and just sod it.
Is it concrete or blacktop?
It's concrete.
A concrete basketball court?
Yes.
That's why cracks.
Without cracks in it?
Yeah.
It's terrible.
And I'll be honest, like, the, because I went there, this does not, like, it's hard to show how bad it is. We're talking about cracks this big.
Who would ever make a basketball court concrete to the ground?
So I don't want to, me personally, I don't want to invest any money in here, because I don't want to double anything that we're doing on the other side, so if it's cheaper to just, because I don't want to leave it to liability, because we have to fix it or remove it, I don't want, I wouldn't want to spend any money, I would have just sod it and bahia it, just like the rest of it, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is, our, our community is, is so close, that I think as we go to build out the Commons Park, and we continue to have like a playground and some amenities at the soccer field, I don't think there's any need to continue with the Fun Parks, especially with some of the challenges that we've, we've had in the past, trying to maintain.
This isn't even a full, full basketball court.
The idea I thought was, with moving forward with the Commons Park, is to sunset the Fun Park altogether, and once the playground equipment hits their life cycle, because again, I wouldn't want to remove the playground equipment if it's still functional, but we can start to, we start to downsize and progressively sunset the park, and then we can determine in the future how we may repurpose the area, or if we don't do anything, or even if it's, you know, someone is willing to buy the property, whatever, but I think, I agree with Flavi, and I think everyone else is, I don't think we should be investing any more dollars in that area right now or anytime in the future till we have a definitive plan for that space.
Our, our recommendation, so I believe we have the capacity, staff can, we can give it, give it a go to demo it ourselves and then have mainscape put-
We can do this for us, oh.
That, that is our goal, is to do it, I mean, obviously, we'll have to rent like a piece of equipment, but I think-
It's like it's self-demoing itself.
Yes.
We're going to accelerate it.
And between now and then, with that term risk, especially in this conversation, I think it needs to be cordoned off somehow, and also, the sooner the better.
Yes, so we're looking for your direction, if you agree with staff recommendation to demo and sod, that's what we'd like to do.
I do have one question, so can we just look at the, the current quality of the goals?
Yeah, if we can salvage anything, the nets, whatever, yes, we will.
We just bought some, too, I just did a PO for some more goals.
I'd like to have the committee, the Parks Committee, look at this as a huge potential for a putting green.
Putting green?
Yep.
Really?
Nothing around here like that. I'm not talking about windmills and all that other crap.
I don't want it.
I'm talking about a true putting green. Your maintenance is mowing, you, just the typical, like a, a green, but there's an opportunity there for, for revenue, and not just have something that's sitting collecting grass.
How would you drive revenue? Just curious.
Do what?
How would you drive revenue, just curious?
To get in and use it, you have to have bypass.
So would you, would you say solely putting, or maybe like a little chip in?
I just do, I just do putting. So you start doing chipping, you're going to be replacing grass all the time. No, no chipping at all, it's just pure putting green.
Artificial or natural?
No, 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 regular grass, and have a little bit of relief in it with six, seven, eight dozen holes, it's a putting green, dollars to-
Well, if you're having regular grass, you don't put on regular grass.
Well, it, it would have to be putting green.
It has to be, uh, Bermuda.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only way you could do it.
Well, that's an option, I think we go to the park.
Well, I see we're getting into a hole here. I mean, why put any effort in this, because if you have a putting green, then you're going to have to maintain it. Somebody's going to have to go out probably every other day.
Yeah, grass, you gotta cut it.
Yeah, not to the level of a putting green.
Well, no, that's true. But the issue is, it's an opportunity. We don't have anything like it in the community and a lot of people play golf. To me, it's a natural. We don't have anything else to use it for. You can't get it any more simpler than a putting green.
So Ed, you're recommending pushing that to the Prac Committee for the.
Same thing.
Committee to look at it.
There's no wrong with us looking at.
The whole location and all, I think you're digging, digging a hole. I mean, without a golf course, why do we need a putting green?
Well, because the putting, the golf course is probably, there's no, there's no reason why we can't throw it to the park as they're looking at it.
Okay. Let them look at it.
So we're clear. Demo and.
Going to motion?
Definitely get rid of it right now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept the staff's recommendation to go ahead and remove the basketball, uh, concrete and to, as Tony said, tape it tomorrow. No, tape it off.
ASAP.
Yeah, so that's my motion.
Because if they're going to come back.
I'll second that.
Oh, in favor?
All right.
If they're going to come in, they'll come in later and add dirt to get relief if you would do a putting green. You know, it's no major thing, but you're not doing anything other than a putting green. It gets too many issues. For example, somebody taking a full swing.
I know, I know. I don't want to spend money.
Anything else?
One time, one and done.
Anything else for Paul? For Public Works, not Playa Park?
Um, there's an item on here about the trunk line aeration project, aerator project.
Yeah.
Weren't we going to have a meeting on that before we did anything?
Correct.
Okay.
That's going to be in either January or February.
Okay. Well, I don't know how you can prepare big specs when we're not sure what we're going to do yet.
We have draft of locations of where there, we have them proposed, and then that way you guys will have something to discuss as part of the workshop.
It sounds like the cart's before the horse, but all right. Because to me, I see no reason to put an aerator on the flowway. Stationary ponds, yes.
I believe, I believe we were going off of prior direction, but I mean, we'll pump, no, we're not planning on doing any actioning of anything until.
Not spending any money yet.
No, correct. Exactly.
Do you want to mention something of?
Yes, I would like to, since I'm on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Name for the record, please.
Joe Schofield. I'm talking to the mic, but it's not here.
It'll pick you up.
Good. We're very concerned about how the money is spent from our organization. And I understand what Ed's saying, but that would be money that might be purposed for something else. How do you communicate this to the Parks and Recreation Committee? Me being new on it, I don't know how the information flow goes from you to us or us to you.
Well, it goes from you to us. So you guys have your own agenda. You put your meeting together and whatever you think it's fit that we need to know you want an action from us, it will come to us for an action. But we were really strong, the five of us, we didn't want to dictate anything or any projects to you guys. We completely stay out of it and allow that to be resident, yeah, resident to committee, committee to board. So that's the expectation.
But if there's, if there, Joe, if there's anything that comes from board down, that is staff's responsibility to report to the committee. So we will, we will prepare an agenda item for your next meeting.
And here's, you know, what I, the way I perceive even all these committees, the way they work is they're, they're structured under the board, but they're operating somewhat independently because that's, you want that, you want that unbiased, um, uh, process and direction. And then I think it's the committees, due diligence and brainstorming that. You also, we want to look and make sure that we're capturing voice of the residents. So part of the committee should be communicating to residents, opening up some channels of communication, even socializing thought concepts, not necessarily what, what is happening or what could happen. And then the other piece, I do think it's important to get some board input because we all should be walking in the same direction, at least for the majority in conceptual items. We'll have some disagreement in, in any of the committees, but we should be driving to what makes sense for the park committee, what makes sense for the residents, and what makes sense for the board. So I think it might be time, because we haven't done this in, I don't even know if we've ever done it, other than just having someone come update. I think it might be a good idea for us to have a workshop, bring the park committee in, and let's just talk about what, what the parks philosophies are, the things that they're focusing their attention on, and get some of our individual opinions, which you should just absorb, but still operate somewhat independently. And I think we should do that for all our committees periodically, have them come in, maybe if it's once a quarter, and just provide an update, maybe a little presentation, what they're thinking about, what they're hearing, what is the board's, because the worst thing that could happen is, and we've seen this on occasion, I'll use the park as an example. They've worked really hard to come up with ideas and they present it, and it doesn't align with the board's direction, so it just gets shot down. And I know that can be frustrating if you put in a lot of effort and it feels like those, you know, that effort isn't realized or it's not being taken seriously. So it might be a good chance just to pulse check so you can get our ideas. That, that would be my, my recommendation is we bring the park committee in and all our committees, you know, at some point throughout the year.
Right after the first of the year would be a good start.
Especially with everything that's going on.
Especially with the new park coming in and all these other issues that are on the horizon. Just talk about it right off the bat. Because nothing I hate more than being on a committee and then have the committee I'm reporting, or the board I'm reporting to, tell me I'm going the wrong direction.
Do you want that to be, so we have a lot of workshops scheduled. We've got aeration, we've got ponds. Do you want that to be a separate standalone meeting? Or do you want that to be?
I think it should be a standalone meeting.
Okay, so.
Can it be a part of a workshop?
As a workshop, yes, that's what I mean.
I like my topic. That topic.
So we've got January and February booked out for your workshops between the trunk line and ponds. So that's why, that's why I'm asking if you want a separate standalone meeting, we can schedule that on a separate day.
I don't think that it, my vision is I won't see, don't see this taking an hour to talk about this. A half an hour should be more than enough to get a communication back and forth to them. Because I'm not looking at going into details.
Is there another workshop that, I mean, is there a workshop where that topic, the other existing topic may only be 30 minutes? That we could do two, two topics? I know we're not very good at that, but.
That's why I'm suggesting a separate standalone meeting. Even if it's at 1:00 that day, maybe you come in at 1:00 and we do 1:00, we do Prac, 2:00 we do the ponds, 3:00 we do normal meeting.
Or we just do a workshop of, add two meetings on one instead.
All right. We will work in coordination and see what the Prac's availability is and try to get that scheduled for either January or February in light of everything going on with all the projects, so.
Joe, would you think, you agree that's probably a good idea?
I think, I think we, that's a great idea. Being new on the board and being more familiar with the committees in Pelican Preserve, I see a big difference in how they operate. And our committee talks about ideas, but you give us the budget. And we don't, we just work within that budget. Whereas in Pelican, they get budgets and they actually develop the budgets for their committees and then present them for approval.
And that's kind of how it was here. The budget came from Prac. It was before you were on it. Yeah.
I'm, I'm, just my observations. These people that are on the committee are really wonderful, hardworking people, very dedicated to Gateway. I'm very impressed and I'm glad I'm, I have a chance to participate with it. But I think, like, there's a disconnect somehow. We.
That's, that's part of like, and, and I've always, Pelican has had, Pelican has had, has had committees established for years. And I think we have said, and I know I've said specifically, there's best practices that have been established. So we need to either adopt some of those best practices, establish our own, and maybe there are, you know, maybe there's some good structure already in place. But if you've got someone with experience, then let's just, let's adopt those.
And I'm not speaking for the board there. I'm, I'm just giving you my options.
Well, understand. Yeah, we appreciate you stepping up. Thank you.
Anything you can do to get more involved, I think would be very, very beneficial. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Paul?
I just.
Yeah. The project, look ahead. Soccer complex parking lot extension, that's not a done deal yet, right? We haven't voted on that. We're still just.
We're in, we're in permanent.
We haven't committed any money.
Other than permitting, up to design, correct.
Okay, all right.
Any follow-up with the roads on Gateway Boulevard and Griffin, the potholes? I, I think I, I missed it. I didn't see it here.
Yes, we submitted, I think 45 RFA's to the county again. So every month, we do an inventory and then we check them. And then if they've not filled those potholes, we, we submit another RFA.
For the same one?
For the same one, so.
It took me over a month to get a huge crater on Daniels filled, so.
Does that just do to, just getting, yeah, priority, just getting in?
Priorities and the response time.
Have you let, have we also copied Cecil on that? Let's, let's, since Cecil, just to follow up, that we've submitted these, these requests.
And hit those craters. Do you think they're going to give this priority?
I don't know. I mean.
They're not paying any attention. They don't care.
And thank you for the math of the TSI, Chelsea Semida. And if it's a favor, I guess Stephanie's going to be doing it.
Yep. We're putting together formula and Excel and make it simple.
Aw, so nice.
Yeah, in case you ever want to do it for us. Thanks.
Kudos to Stephanie. She did the math and the form, provided the formula. It is including your monthly report.
All right. Anything else for Paul? He's no longer drinking out of a fire hose. He's, he's catching up, so. All right. Anything for utilities, Mr. Shaw?
Where's the missing manhole?
Either under a wall or under a palm tree.
Well, if you knew where it was, it wouldn't be missing, right?
You say it's a hidden links?
Hidden links.
Inside the gate?
It's, it's either behind the, it's either under the monument or the palm.
You don't have a monument there.
Hidden links?
We have a wall.
The wall.
Is it the monument on the wall?
So that wall at the entrance, it's either right underneath it or.
One north, one south. Which one?
North side.
North side.
Yeah.
It might be losing palm tree.
Just behind it, under a palm tree is where we think we've measured it from, but we haven't got.
Where's it coming off of? Outside the wall? From Gateway Boulevard?
Well, that's the measurement we had from the Cam, TV project, but we found inside and pushed our camera from the inside and tried to cross them.
Does it go from there to a manhole in the street? It's got to.
There's a manhole in the street, but there's a manhole in between.
In between, that's what I'm saying.
In between the median and, and the street.
So if you go to the street and triangulate back.
That's what we've done. And that's where we came up with the palm tree.
Ground. Is it in that common area? I'm just trying to find out if it's in private property, my common area.
I think it's in the common area. I think it's close behind.
Get the whole hell out of here. I don't care.
I think it's close behind the wall.
They just don't want to dig up anybody's house.
We'll let you know before we come out there and start digging.
Hopefully it's in an easement.
Ah, there goes Tony. You can go and walk.
Leave it to Tony to be a Debbie Downer.
I've got some drawings, but I'm not aware of any utility easement in that area, to tell you the truth. That's what's got me concerned. Done.
That's something we'll have to look into then.
We'll go back and look at the plot.
Sanitary sewer comes out of hidden links and goes all the way across.
Probably goes over to the pump station.
Gateway Boulevard to the pump station, right. So that's what that pump station solely serves that community.
Anything else for Bill?
Yeah, combination for Bill and Paul. Have we resolved, I don't know what the status is. Have we resolved the pump station issues in Matarita Two as to who is responsible for the landscaping?
Yes.
That's all been resolved and?
It, it is the responsibility of PPCA. I had a conversation with the Annabelle earlier this week, and this landscape subcommittee is actually discussing it tomorrow. And.
That's what I was trying to get at, because I knew it was going to be the end.
Yeah. So, and I've talked to Mark Eversman as well. So ultimately, there's some decisions that the landscape subcommittee will have to make, have to decide. But the utilities department does not maintain landscaping, anything outside of the lift station. He maintains inside.
And that's why it was a combination question with Paul.
Is that number 19 there? Okay.
And the GIS, or Ed Hedges has been in that project also. So we get the GIS updated and correct?
We're working on it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Bill?
One thing. Your guy last Sunday, yeah, I just got out of church. The guy that came over and took care of that Summer Wind fiasco, Fabian? Excellent. Excellent. That was, that was a disaster if I've ever seen one in my life. What a nightmare.
Did the mayor escape Fabian?
No.
Employee Fabian.
It's a good example of good engineering construction. When you put a four-inch line in and goes to a T with a four-inch going both directions and there's no thrust blocking on the backside off the main line, it don't work. Now, it was in a valve. The valve at the T pulled apart about that far, which caused the glued fitting, which is probably was put in when Christ was a child, pulled apart. And we had a water fountain, a four-inch. And I don't know how many tens of thousands of gallons went out in the street, but it was a mess.
Was it a PVC connection?
If you call that PVC.
It was PVC on the back.
It looked like straw with a PVC identifying fire on it. Cheap stuff, done by WCI years ago. But the issue was, is that we found the, the water was so bad and the sand and all the deal, it covered up the valve. We couldn't find the valve to shut it off. So we had then to go and isolate and lose several sections. Thank God it was, but it's just one of those things, boy.
Live and learn.
These, these things got to be checked.
Just two things. Fabian, that's.
He did a great job.
Yeah, he, he's one of our utility.
So can you just, maybe tomorrow, can you just shoot him a, a message just saying that he was recognized during the board meeting today for really good work? And two, in the, in the meters, there's a pink.
Purple. Purple's irrigation.
Pantone purple.
So purple's irrigation and the white or whatever.
Black.
Black, okay. So purple's irrigation.
You're doing a house, you, you want to make sure you got those two separated.
Black is, it's horrible.
Yeah. And then the other one too, is we realized is that the shut-off, unlike a common house deal, which is the spigot on the inside of the valve or on the inside of the meter, the district side of the meter, ain't there on a two-inch, three-inch meter. It's out at the, the line. So if you're looking for something.
Thank you.
District Attorney in Projects.
Just going through, call it, getting down to Daniel's Parkway, utility issues, upside, that's all. The final one by the board when it comes back, as Chelsea mentioned, they talked about two faces. We've talked about retaining, obtaining all necessary easements and all documents at one time, as opposed to splitting up and then trying to chase them for documents at a later point. So, yeah, I think it's 6.5. I'm not sure which one we're at, but that's underway. The Flock, I'm working with, ready on that. We're working on revised text and language to go to the Flock folks on the termination because there are two different contracts. When the agreement is terminated, so it'll be plenty of time just to renotice them and give them notice of non-renewal to make sure by next, I think it's March, they're all terminated, is my recollection is the timeframe.
I think you're right. Yeah, one's December, one's March, something like that.
And the Santa Luis drains, last Friday, had a telephone, brief. The attorney for the master, could we get revised doc, maybe Thursday or Friday? I was at a seminar. Revised documents, 13 minutes before the phone call, where they were substantially revised on Lennar's end, Lennar's end, not redlined. But we did have a conversation about the rationale, Lennar's approach. The attorney for the HOA and myself representing the district are not in, we're, we're in agreement on substantial number of matters and not in agreement with the approaches at times taken by Lennar in this matter. And one aspect, one item that came up was trees and vegetation. It appears that possibly the association planted some trees and landscaping and the landscape maintenance, I mean, the lake maintenance easement and drainage easement that may need to come out when Lennar's vendor is going to do the work. So if that's the case, that's something we need to talk to with the association about having them take it out. The attorney for the association is going to talk with them about that, give them a heads up that if you put all this in afterwards and it poses a problem in doing the reconstruction work, then you may end up having to take that out. But it's a good working relationship with Mr. Rob Cooper, the attorney for the association. So hopefully we can keep moving on that as we keep impressing upon Lennar. The dry season is here, it's the perfect time to do it. So let's try to get this wrapped up sooner than later. Arborwood, we're still waiting on receipt of the signed documents. Scroll to the next page. Easement for aerators, worked on that. We had a couple little interesting twists on location of various lines, as far as locations, with two single-family homeowner sites. The one from the PPCA is easy for the RV storage. And the golf course, there's already a drainage easement, lake maintenance easement impressed on the golf course track, so no easements are needed from them. So it's the one, there's two home sites in Solaro that lines are located in. I think Mr. Gepper is going to try to work with the property owners to get them to.
Yeah, I was a little confused as to kind of where we were in the project. There's been a number of documents. They've gone back and forth. Some things were not as clear as they could have been. So right now, Chelsea, I've got the three, that you gave me three packets, and these are actually correct. And we can take these to the homeowners.
That is, that is the RV lot. That is not.
All three of these are RV lot?
Yes, you asked for three copies.
Okay. Then I will get with.
Solaro is pending.
So, okay, so we're still not there yet. Okay.
So this is just one, one, same document three times?
Yes. He asked for three.
I'm going to give one of these today to Perry, and he can get Faye to sign it. Or if you have any questions, fire away at.
Yeah, and the, and the agreement, the, the easement for the one Solaro property owner has been drafted. And the graphic has been prepared, I believe, generally, pardon.
And we reached commonality of agreement on the remaining parcels, for lack of a better word?
Depends on what landscape subcommittee decides tomorrow.
Okay, because that may open some new ones. Got it.
And so again, the hope is that the property owners and residents be willing to grant.
We have not had a problem with that in the past.
That would be very nice. Storage, thank you. I'm sure, working on the title opinion. I'll get that out the door on Monday at the latest. I know it says 19th. Chamberlain, we just talked about that. Went through the CDVG items and working on the sample forms to attach to task authorizations and clauses. Because they can't just be incorporated by reference, they need to be incorporated in full. And we'll do that as appropriate. The, Gateway Greens, I think it's all been signed and squared away?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody, for that.
Um, I don't, did we ever collect the recording?
Uh, I think so. Let me double check.
We need to collect the 50% of the recording fees from the.
Got a note, Lori got it, was it like 37 or 40 dollars or something?
Yeah.
Well, you can't have them, you record, you know, either way.
Well, it was recorded. We just don't release the recorded document because I don't know what the fees are going to be until I record it.
Okay.
And then we release the document once they pay the fees.
The board policies and procedures manuals, I went back and looked at the last iteration. Chelsea had provided, made some additional changes based upon the conversations we had recently with the board with regards to designations and items like that. And then also a lesson I learned at another mediation where the day of mediation, the designated board member said he could not appear. He, so that was, that resulted in a little scramble fest. And it's, so there's language in there, and Chelsea's reviewing that so we can get it back and start meeting with the board members on that.
Have it. Georgia sent it to you.
Oh, do I have it back already? Okay.
Gateway Greens, you can take off your list. I confirmed with Georgia that it was paid. She, I thought she told me, but I just wanted to make sure I didn't think it. So it's done, filed, given to them. Gateway Greens is done.
Good, great, fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for that. That's been a long time coming. Any other questions?
I think I did ask Chelsea, and I don't know if we follow up on the answer regarding, I saw the letter that we sent out to, to Lee County regarding the soccer field. But did we have, remember I talked to you about having to have some requirements? You talked to Tony about that?
Well, I talked, we talked about, we could do conditional requirements. So like, for, if, if we gave this to the, or sold it to the Board of County Commission, like a reverter clause in the event that they tried to go private and sell it, or that it would come back to us, or.
About a long-term lease.
You can do a long-term lease, absolutely.
There's lots of options, but we did send the letter to the Board of County Commission just to see if there's, I did get a response from one of the assistants saying that they included the Parks and Rec director and haven't heard anything back. I figured I'd wait till when I come back from Thanksgiving.
There's, there's, there's more in the works right now going.
Yeah, so.
So it's, it's far from done.
He's, he's now the chair.
Oh, do tell.
So I wanted to wait.
What do you mean?
Yeah, do tell.
There's, from what I've heard, is reconsideration of county staff at a high level, not a medium level, a high level, that there may be an interest in taking over the park.
Wouldn't that be phenomenal? Okay.
So that's why I'm going to wait for early December, I'm going to reach out. Cecil was just put in his chair.
Sentiment to me is the people we talked to before weren't the people to talk to.
Like I said.
Great follow-up.
Yeah, we'll do additional research to make sure that any conditions are ones that could not be set aside. So that.
I guess that was my requirement because I knew we had to have X amount of acreage designated as Parks and Rec. And if we turn it to Lee County, would that still count towards what we as the CDD are required or no? Because now it's county, not.
You mean because our, we have to maintain, what, Tony was with a hundred and forty acres?
I don't know if it requires the district, it just says it has an acreage analysis. I don't think.
That was my question, because I mean, I'm going by recollection, but I remember before you mentioning that it had to be under the district, hence why we had to incorporate the linear park as a park to add to that because we were a little short.
To meet the total.
So the only thing is, I think is good that we're going with the Lee County, but are we giving something that we're required to have?
Yeah, and if we give a lease.
And if so, then the lease would be the best.
If we give a lease, then we still have it, yeah.
Yeah, I think the question.
I don't want to approach them with something that it's going to be not, like, let's do the research so when we do.
This is a violation, gotta go out and buy land somewhere.
This is all tied back into the FPL, it goes back to 2020.
That's how my memory goes.
Well, no, I mean, it's.
Twenty twenty was just yesterday.
To your point, like I said before, before it was staff to staff and now this was board to board. And so I think there may be a miscommunication between their board and staff, so hopefully this will open that conversation at a board level on their side, at least to have a conversation.
That's the only other thing that I, the only other question.
The only issue was is that, is this a lease? Being the county, we could give that to them, correct?
Absolutely could.
We could do that with the county, but nobody else.
No problem.
Okay. But a lease to me would be.
Greater protection. Particularly with the grammar for green space. Particularly if there's a requirement for green space, so many acreage.
Well, the, again, I'm doing a real quick look at the Zoni verification.
That is, is you had to have so many acres of green space, it didn't say who had to do it. It just, you couldn't convert it to a non-park situation.
Yeah, I'm reading my.
Go to the high-rise.
Anything?
My Zoni verification letter from 2020, I have a number of attachments, it's only forty-three pages. It just said, WGC, the fifth DRI amendment, section three, paragraph forty-eight, WGC, West Angeles Gateway, will dedicate or cause to be dedicated parcels of land totaling one hundred thirty-five acres for community parks. It's a linear exhibit. So that's for community parks. And then there's other areas that it talks about earlier, thirty-five, one hundred thirty-five acres. And what we wanted to make sure at the time was that the FPL easement of one hundred sixty-two point six five acres qualifies as a linear park and community park. But again, it doesn't require any particular entity.
Just to have it.
That's my general recollection. There's my general recollection, but I can get them, retrieving all these, I'll send them to Chelsea.
Anything else?
Keep them going, Chelsea.
Yep, that's me.
We're almost done.
All right, agenda management?
Anybody like to add anything to Chelsea's agenda management? Or have any questions?
There's the item that we talked about, that Doug suggested is having the workshops to facilitate committee communication.
I have to add the joint, the joint meeting with Prac and then the functionality and the design of the dais and boardroom.
Out of curiosity, the e-bikes on district property, I know we have that. What are we doing? What are we waiting on? Is it just?
The e-bikes.
E-bikes on district property. Like, we have it as an item, but.
Capacity from staff to put together an item for you.
Yeah, the law just changed. They just got revised.
Capacity is what you're waiting on from staff.
Our policy, honestly, doesn't really matter because it's, you know, where it's being impacted or, you know, is at the county level, so.
So are you aware of it, did something change?
I don't know, I can check it real quick.
I tell you this because Halloween, I had detail over there in my community and the gentleman that did the detail, he was mentioning just a few weeks back that something changed. And I guess it was regarding the description of what becomes, you know, an electrical bike and not, if he had.
Is this in Tallahassee then?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, he was, I mean, he was Halloween, I wasn't really paying attention, but he did mention that something changed.
We'll get it sometime and, general copy, we'll bring something for your consideration.
Probably amazing that we haven't had a vitality between Lee County with the way these kids are riding bikes.
I was on.
We just had one three days. Naples, oh, was it Naples?
Was it Naples?
I knew it was one, a couple.
That was about four months ago.
No, there was one just now.
Naples, another one?
I was on a way to an appointment on Summerland the other day and there was an ambulance and two fire trucks and it was an e-bike and it was not pretty.
Here, we've got problems with the e-bikes, e-scooters.
Yeah, this is.
They are coming out of that school at about two o'clock and coming up Gateway Boulevard flying, just flying on the sidewalk. And the police won't do nothing. They are doing nothing. Speeding out there is a joke. It's just out of hand.
The sooner we get FWC in.
Anyway.
Is no way to pull them a little earlier?
We can, it's just coordination and then we have to work through some things. And with the holidays, I didn't see that it was worth doing until January.
Well, so probably first of the year is not bad. Because, here's the trend, and I'll tell you just because I have boys. Last year it was, but it was more e-bikes and, you know, like, so like the scooter e-bikes, but then also the bikes that still have the pedals. This year, the trend for the kids, it is the motorcycles. That is what's gone completely bananas.
Because the bikes have gotten so fast.
And that's what they're looking for.
There's a licenser there and there isn't on e-bikes, that's the problem.
What I'm saying is what we're going to see after the holidays, because we have, after Christmas, we're going to see probably double the amount of motorcycles.
That's what I want, that's something.
As opposed to, you know, the e-bikes. And I'm telling you, because I know that's what my kids are saying.
motorcycles have to be registered through the county, licensed.
And I think that's what the police officers were saying, like, everything now, if he has a pedal, then you exempt, but anything else doesn't, regardless of the size of the motor, whatever it was, it's considered a motor vehicle.
The legislation is not keeping up with the technology.
So it's something that just changed now.
That's exactly what the problem is, yeah.
I don't have anything else. I will be out of town for Thanksgiving, I'll be back on the second, but I'm taking my laptop with me because we've got some agendas and stuff. So I'll be in touch if you guys need anything. If you need to email me or call me, call my personal phone. I'm looking at Bob specifically.
I'm here.
But Laura will be here, but if you guys need anything, don't hesitate to reach out. And I hope everybody has a very safe and happy Thanksgiving if you're traveling and enjoy your time with family.
I do have one thing, it's probably on the supervisor's comment, but I would just go now because I know Bob kind of mentioned. So regarding the parking lot, I know we talked about the last few days, how much parking. I wanted to get a count of how many cars are, you know, are parked on the right of way, on the LME, not on the school, because the school is a parking lot, so if we have to overflow, that's fine. But just how, a count, maybe for the next two days this week and two days next week?
For this side of the field.
For, yeah, so only where there's a safety issue, which will be the LME, where the kids are fishing in South Park, the right of way on Soccer Drive and then the entrance from the sidewalk between the school and the soccer field.
Our property.
Yeah, our property, like, the school.
From the gate in, is that what's our property? The fence in, whatever you call it.
So I wanted to get a count of that because, so we have total of two hundred and fourteen parking spots right now on both sides, a hundred and something one and a hundred and thirteen the other. So you think we can add about another hundred parking space? That was the plan?
It's going to mirror the back parking lot.
Let Lee County do it if we can get rid of it.
Well, yeah.
That decision wouldn't be made until we make a decision on what the.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. But I just. Do see it as a safety issue. And also getting a count will tell us if we do charge parking, you know, what was that revenue?
What's the potential revenue?
Honestly, the more that I thought about it, the more math I did and I talked to Chelsea about it, that is an easy revenue right there because there is no maintenance. It's not like we're maintaining the soccer field yet. Well, you can actually piggyback on the county contract to have the machines and just, they will just put the parking ticket in to, in the, on the window and we'll have enforcement by, you know.
Well, the score could be analyzed.
Yeah, so there is a significant amount of revenue.
So Laura's crunching for the next meeting for your guys' workshop. She's, not all of the parking in the grass, but just the stalls, the parking stalls, she's crunching those numbers. But we can, I know because they've got championships, I think tonight or tomorrow night, so I think it's have to come out and just get rough, rough counts on how many people are out here.
And I also think we need to look at, you know, again, across the street, we're over in FPL, being able to utilize that as a parking.
We talked about that before and FPL had to give approval for that, you remember? Authorized vehicles only.
They have a tough time getting paid for that then.
And it may not be all that difficult when you look at, but, you know, where other parking is under power lines elsewhere around, I mean, in Naples.
Two there too.
If you're familiar with Cedar Table, yeah. And as you go there, across the street on the east side of Cedar Table off Livingston, there's a parking lot for their employees and an FPL easement.
Over there, I see they park all over, top of the flowers and everywhere.
But that's, but that's a parking lot.
But I just wanted to see one. If we're going to, if we have a need for a hundred and fifty cars and we're going to build a hundred parking spots, it's okay. And then what would be the general, the revenue that we can get from the, you know, the spots that we already have plus the ones that we'll pay for it? I just want to see the numbers on that.
To me, there's kind of two, two things here. One, safety and security and then potential for.
Yeah, and I'm going with safety first because I will invite you guys to, and that's one, it's a combination of things because Soccer Drive is dark. There, we add, I think, two light poles since.
Three or four.
Three or four, but it's dark, so you cannot see the kids. So like, so that's my biggest thing, like.
When they're parking on the hill.
Yeah, they're on the hill, you can't see the kids and they just literally run.
Especially if you park this way, when you're reversing.
Turning back up, you don't know who's on the road.
You're not seeing behind. That's why I just, I just do not like them parking on the hill over there. And it's gotten really good sometimes and sometimes if you don't reinforce it, all it takes is one person to park there and everybody else.
Monday, we had a meeting, we opened the gate to get in here. Cars start, because the cars are parked in front of the gate. We opened the gates to get there to a minute, cars start coming in this way. We're like, no, because then we have to close the gates.
Another revenue stream.
And I'm like, no, we can't do that, so, yeah.
We'll get counts.
That's all.
Do you want to go to supervisor comments?
Yeah, Carol, I'll start with Carol.
I have nothing.
Two. One, what is the status on the park and the admin building relative to sodding the finished product? Are, we're not putting in floor tam, are we?
Putting in Palmetto.
Putting in Palmetto, great, great.
But, but I'm going to caveat.
We just talked about this.
I'm going to caveat it because that's the grass that's going, like, where they're staging their trailer. They have to obviously put it back to its original condition and if they're putting anything, I want them to put Palmetto, but we know Palmetto needs irrigation.
We even have to do a change order. Why do we even want to take a chance? Don't put by air or anything else.
Palmetto was part of the contract, but I'm saying the irrigation, because that was future phases, is, might be a change order. So I may be coming back to you with that.
Second, second issue. I am tired of answering phone calls from my residents. Who owns West Links Drive and Commonwealth Drive?
You own West Links from Commerce North, we own West Links from Commerce South.
Commonwealth Drive.
Commonwealth, we own Commonwealth.
I would suggest we give the school a notice that you've got forty-five days to solve your problem. Otherwise, I'm going to make the motion that we immediately post no parking signs on those streets and end this. It is a disaster, somebody's going to get killed.
It is really bad.
It is out of hand. They are now queuing on Gateway, or on Daniel's Parkway, back almost to Daniel's, or the Gateway Boulevard turnoff. If you're coming back into Gateway and you want to turn off onto West Links, like to exit the backside of Gateway Greens, lots of luck. There's no room to get in.
All the way by the high school. It's all the way on Daniel's, all the way by the high school.
So my thing is, tell the school you've got forty-five days. On January one, my motion is going to be to put no parking on all of those streets, period, and end this and then start issuing tickets.
Well, to be honest, I don't think.
This has got to stop because they're not doing anything and they don't give a damn. They don't give a damn.
All those thirty or forty cars today that I passed coming in here, coming off of, what's that, interconnecting road between Tree Line and us?
That was a lot.
Up by the Center, oh my God.
Oh, we have to see the other side.
The other side, but same.
Why don't we just put the signs now?
There had to be fifty cars.
I mean, we can make the motion.
No staffing, standing, parking.
It's just out of hand and they don't give a damn, so neither do I.
Everybody was in a bicycle lane.
Do what?
Everybody's car, they're parking all the bicycle lane.
So do you want to make a motion to just go ahead and put the sign now? We don't need thirty signs, but we just need, you know, signs there and, because if January we're going to start enforcing FWC, then we can tell them you enforce it there. So that gives the school forty-five days from now until January, even more, you know, at least a sign. Because they won't enforce it if there is no sign, so.
Well, we can't touch, in my opinion, we can't touch Commerce Lakes because that's not our road.
Well, we can, let's just put the sign where we can.
But we can do West Links and we can do Commonwealth Drive.
Ask the county to put no parking.
We can ask the county, we did.
They won't do anything.
They put thirty signs on Griffin.
Do you see all the signs on Griffin, the forty-five signs that I got? I asked for one, they were so sick of me, they put forty-five.
You put a sign that says anything, but they won't enforce it.
Well, but we're going to give FWC a chance. So I think it's appropriate to get a motion now to get time to put the signs by January, allows the school to know the January.
I'll make that motion, but you're pushing a rope.
I'll second it.
Let me, can I ask before? Do you want the fancy green signs? Because that's what we do for everything else and those are twelve hundred bucks a pop.
Sorry.
The one on Daniel's?
The aesthetic green, the aesthetic posts.
Let's go step by step. Let's go just a regular El Chepo county sign first, then we can always graduate to the other side.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't want to put a thousand, twelve hundred dollar sign out there and then have some idiot drive over it.
Well, the twelve hundred dollar sign's not going to be wasted for the aesthetics, I would.
Well, the signs that we're going with are.
As cheap as I am, I would, I would go to an upgraded sign.
Yeah, because we don't need a lot, I mean, we.
I don't know why you're going to get a two-by-four and a steak in the grand.
The motion is put no parking signs both sides of the road on West Link's and Commonwealth Drive.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so we'll go with the nice signs then? Okay. So we have a motion, a second, I'll call for a vote, on favor? Aye. Carol?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
Do those two things.
Yeah, the first one was the sod.
Oh, okay. Paul?
Oh, yeah, I need Chelsea for this one. We received a letter, I don't know if the, my fellow supervisors got it, but the Pelican Reserve Community Association is interested in pursuing the possibility of moving roads and the security from us to them, and to that end, one of the incremental steps would be to get the city of Fort Myers to agree to consider it. So in order to make that happen, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Supervisors of the Gateway hereby agrees to cooperate with PPCA at such time in the future that PPCA may formally request the transfer of certain assets, specifically roads, sidewalk, gatehouse, located within the boundaries of Pelican Reserve. Such a transfer would occur through the city of Fort Myers and only upon the satisfaction of applicable all legal arguments. So furthermore, GSD shall provide PPCA with a letter attesting to the motion that PPCA can discuss it with the city. That's all, and their willingness.
Well, I can, okay.
The city won't talk to them without the letter. Which came first, the chicken or the egg?
Well, why can't we have staff talk to the city?
Well, first of all, you made a motion, I will second your motion.
And the letter.
The clarification on the motion.
Have you got it, Chelsea?
No, no.
I don't have it either.
Okay.
Well, I think the issue, maybe this is legal, can we do it?